Good evening, and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting here at the City Hall Chambers in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, Tuesday, July 12th. I'll ask Dr. Lister for a roll call. He wasn't quite ready. I apologize why we wait for the roll call that we're running about 25 minutes late. We had a work session regarding budgetary special ed funding and PASS and food services prior to this, so again, I apologize if we're running late. Dr. Lister?
Thank you. Regarding attendance, Raymond Bowles?
Here.
Nancy Novlin Clayburg?
Yes.
Nancy Craig. Clay Hayward?
Here.
John Lyons?
Here.
Cabral Teft?
Charles Vaughn?
Here.
Ann Walker?
Here.
Andrew Canassi?
Here.
Lyndon Brulette?
Here.
Ann Mayer?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
In a moment, I'll ask that we rise for a moment silent reflection and keep those that are less fortunate than us, those that are serving us overseas in mind, and again, the tragedies that have happened in London, let's keep those in mind, that everything in the world is not always hunky-dory, but we come together on a regular basis at this school board to make life better and hopefully more understanding so we don't have these tragedies later on in life. We rise for the moment of silent reflection. I am going to ask that our outstanding Patty Wargener lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance as she turns a milestone this week, along with two other board members, and maybe afterwards we should sing happy birthday to Ray Bowles and the person coming to be half a century, I mean, that's Mr. Lyons.
The name must be.
And for those, you know, the hearing aid comes on your 50th birthday there, John.
Thank you, Kat.
Again, I'll ask Patty to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Patty's nowhere near that age, I know.
Thank you.
I didn't give it age.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the Portsmouth School Board, I do wish those three individuals, Ray Bowles, Patty Wargener, and John Lyons, the happiest of birthdays, and we thank you for taking the time this week to be with us. We have a secretary's report of the approval of the June 28, 2005 minutes. Is there a motion to accept?
No.
It's moved in seconded. Is there discussion, corrections on that? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is, we have correspondence, an email from Diane Pinkham regarding Ryan Brulette and the Skills USA competition. I think everybody had a chance to read this when it came into us. Again, I think we probably have a proud mother to the far left of me here. Would you like to read this for us, please?
Out loud?
Yes.
Hi, Bob. Thank you for following through with the board regarding Ryan's success. I'm so proud of him, and after seeing him daily for three years, I will really miss him next year. Contest was organized differently this year. Students were not given recipes, rather they were told what cooking methods they would be expected to demonstrate. The selection of seasonings and decisions around plating were to be unique to themselves. I will see items he had to make and the skill components they were evaluated on. Ryan was judged not only on the final product, but needs and please, needs and place. He's going to be so angry, I didn't say that right. Organization and preparation, sanitation, chicken fabrication, nice cuts and wasted products. He also had a written knowledge exam. Ryan had to make a classic Caesar salad and knowledge of ingredients and ability to make a small side dressing that's forcing two fats to stay together in stable form. Cream of broccoli soup, knowledge of clean-based soups, taste and texture. Chicken saute with pan sauce, rice pilaf and sauteed julienne of summer squash and zucchini.
Good.
Knowledge of saute and the ability to do so with different products, knowledge of pan sauce technique and pilaf method in preparing rice. Chicken braised with root vegetables, knowledge of braising technique, cooking in a liquid to both, cooking in a liquid to both cook the products and create a sauce, and the understanding of cooking times vegetables of various densities and size. Ryan's sixth place placing was outstanding. I believe there were 38 secondary contestants. Last year, he came in 20th place, so he improved his place by 14 positions. Please extend my thanks to the board for their support of what we do, and thanks to you for your support. You've always been one of our biggest fans. Diane.
Motion to accept?
No move.
Second.
Motion to accept and place on file is moved in seconded. Comments? Bob?
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, I asked that that be placed in the file tonight because last time we reported on Ryan's progress in Kansas City, we were at the end of the meeting and was kind of hurried, and we all are very proud of Ryan and what he's accomplished. And I was asked several times what he made to win his award, and I wasn't even going to try and go there, but I want people to know it was more than just a tuna sandwich. And we're very proud of him. And also, the way Diane ends the note is that she appreciates the board's willingness to send students on events like this, and again, I think that's very important. It's another example of how we support students with a personalized education, so thank you very much.
And congratulations, Ryan.
I did bring back pictures, just so you can have a sense. You can look at some of the things that he had, that he made, but the amount of people that were there, there were like 15,000 people at this event, so I think that you have to have a sense of that, so there's sort of a picture that you can kind of get an idea about that. So I'll pass them around as long as they don't get lost or whatever, so you can kind of look through them.
We thank you.
Keep in mind, there were 85 events going on at the same time.
Oh, wow.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? See none? All those in favor, accepting, place on file?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any other correspondence to be brought forth tonight? See none? That brings us to public commentary session, groups or individuals. Did we have anybody sign up? I had nobody signed up, so I'll give two seconds here. Anybody wishing to speak this evening? See none? Moving from item three to item four, recognition of staff and students. Bob, anybody tonight?
Not this evening, thank you.
Item five, personnel, professional nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Doctor Lister, I apologize.
Yeah? Okay. I have two nominations and one letter of resignation, please. The first nomination is for Amy Gordon. Amy would like to recommend that she be employed as a visual arts teacher at Portsmouth High School for the next school year, and she is replacing Sean Peel, who retired at the end of last year.
No move?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
The second nomination is for Kimberly Thornton, and we're recommending that she be employed as a physical education and health teacher at Portsmouth High School for the next school year, and she is replacing Andrea Ogden, who retired at the end of last year, or resigned at the end of last year.
No move?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I might, just quickly, and I like to make this comment particularly when we're on TV, it appears as though we pass these motions very quickly. First, the school administration, and then our school administrative unit administration spends an inordinate amount of time going over the wonderful applications that we receive, and we as a school board also review these with the superintendent in private session. So while it may appear as though we just are rubber stamping these applications, that is not the case. We spend time on all of these positions before actually voting on them in open session.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other personnel business to go over tonight? Dr. Lister?
Mr. Chairman, I have one resignation. I am entering the resignation of Mike Mayo, who is a physical education teacher at Portsmouth High School, and he's resigning as of the end of the school year.
No move?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion. Is that a correction at the end of this past school year or in the new school year, correct?
That's correct. End of past school year.
Okay. See no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Any other personnel business to be brought forth this evening?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Committee reports. Tonight, we have none listed. I will state that this Thursday evening at Portsmouth High School, beginning at 6:00 with a walk with the city council and school board members, we will be having a joint building committee meeting. This is actually a work session with Joanne Grasso, the co-chair, along with myself hosting this. I will not be there till approximately 6:30, and we're not going to go, we're not going to rush people. If they're not done with the tour by 6:30, we'll convene in the library with a work session. This is not a chance for people to add on new projects on this. This is to show a status and have questions of what may and may not be done at this time and what we have accomplished. This gets us ready to end the construction phase of the new Portsmouth High School, and on August 28 at 2:00 PM will be the grand dedication of the Portsmouth High School, and we encourage people to come. Invitations will be going out in two weeks, and a reminder invitation will follow up afterwards, but again, this is a great chance for people to see this on the 28th. We do invite the public to this work session, so if they need a better understanding of what's being finalized to get done in this project, it is in the process, such as outside, I know a number of people have talked about paving and so forth, but all this will be discussed on Thursday night. Mr. Vaughn?
Chairman, I heard a rumor that there was going to be a keg of beer and some pretzels inside.
Immediately afterwards at your house? Immediately afterwards at your house?
Was I misinformed by this rumor?
I'm sorry to say, on Thursday night, yeah, there might be pretzels, but in the beer it goes.
Pretzels and soda.
But again, Thursday night is a work session with the council. We want to make sure that we respect and honor everybody that has allowed this process to go, to have an understanding of where we're at, but to quote Bob Eufola, is that, you know, the JBC has met its charge and is continuing to meet its charge, and we're just allowing these two groups, the Board of Education and the city council, to sit down and see the progress and to know that we're about to wrap this on up. Other committee reports to be brought forth. See none? I'll add one more. There's been a subcommittee of booster groups in regards to the snack shack. We'll be meeting again in two weeks, in this next, so two weeks from Monday, this past Monday. I want to thank Dexter Roble for an outstanding job. He has gotten the blueprints started. Peter and Bob are going to follow this up to City Hall, and already have had some minor discussion. The current snack shack that we have can no longer serve prepared foods, I guess is the best way to say that. It does not meet a number of code issues. I want to thank Dish for bringing this to our attention, and in fact, that this would be a nice way to sort of unite many of the booster groups, and has already. We've had two good meetings, and I look forward to the groups, and I am so surprised of the donations that have started to come in to get this snack shack done, because it really, the one that we have there has fallen to disrepair and is not proper to serve food, and I believe we will meet the September dates. So when football and field hockey and soccer and all the other activities that happen in this city utilize that building, I think we're going to come close. We may not make it exactly that week, but it's going to be close. And anybody wanting to attend these meetings is more than welcome. Any other committee reports? See none? That brings us to new business. Dr. Lister, any new business to bring forth?
Mr. Chairman, would I be allowed to bring this up at this time?
Yes.
This is listed on the personnel, but I'd like to ask the board for authorization for the superintendent to accept resignations and to offer teaching contracts pending final approval by the school board. The reason I'm asking for this is that I'm still interviewing individuals in their interview committee, search committees going on in the schools, and we are looking at the desire to hire some people, but we don't have another board meeting until August 19th.
August 9.
August 9?
Yes.
August 9. So I'm asking for permission to continue to interview people and offer contracts.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you provide the words, I'll make the motion.
It's right here, right.
Okay.
Moving to authorize the superintendent.
Okay, I now would coach, to make the motion, please?
You may.
Okay.
Catching up to your age, so look out.
I move that we authorize the superintendent to accept resignations and to offer teaching contracts pending final approval by the school board.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion.
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, because it is contractual of nature, so we will ask for a roll call. Thank you, Charlie.
Regarding the motion, what is your pleasure? Nancy Novlin Clayburg?
Yes.
Clay Hayward?
Yes.
John Lyons?
Yes.
Charles Vaughn?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Raymond Bowles?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Unanimously.
Passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other new business to be brought forth to the Portsmouth School Board at this time? See none? We go to continuing business. We have the deficit fee-based programs 2005. I'm going to hand it over to both Dr. Lister and Peter Torry. And I know you're going to refer it to Peter, so go ahead, Peter.
Well, as the board, obviously, we had a work session on this because it arose from a discussion we had at the last meeting in June. The board asked me to prepare a certain amount of information on the history and the, and really to try and document the significance and rationale of why we have come, why we do have a sort of a due and owing situation with the, between our relationship financially with the, with the city's books of account. I believe that we accomplished that, and we had a good discussion of that. I think that the next step really that has to take place now is that the books, we were closing the books as of June 30, 2005, on the fiscal year '04-'05 school year, which will have a profound effect on where this needs to go further in our discussions with the city. Once the school department closes its books, similar to police and fire and public works and all of that, the city will be, will put together its financial report typically late August, early September, and then the auditors will come in and look at that, and really the resting place of this situation that has, that has been percolating to some degree over the last two or two or three years will, will have an update for fiscal year 2004-2005. And I think the next step will emanate from that. It is premature for me to pronounce where the books are exactly, although I, as I said in non-public, in work session, that the two of the three programs that were running in negatives in previous years, I believe have turned that around and actually, one actually looks as though it is, I say profitable, it has actually have, it has more revenue than it has expenditure for this year, which is essentially going to reduce the debt situation. We know that the past program for this last year was in a very difficult situation and financially bears that out, although the loss there is actually less than I first anticipated. It's going to be the neighborhood of $150,000. The board at its last meeting did authorize me, to the degree that I had funds remaining in the school department general fund budget, to cover that loss or any portion of that that I could, and I reported to the board that that loss will be 100%, I believe, pending final closing of the books, to be 100% covered by this, by any remaining funds in this year's school budget. So I think that too will go a long way in helping to turn that situation around or at least show resolve that we are trying to manage the situation. I don't know if the board wants to continue the discussion here further. I think really the next step is frankly for me to close the books and to make my final financial transmissions to the city and prepare the final reports, and then see where that, where it falls in relation to the criteria established really by the, by the city auditors and by the finance department.
Mr. Vaughn?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Torry for the fine presentation he gave us in the work session of one of the problems that all municipalities, or let's see, most of the municipalities throughout the United States are having at the local level coming to grips with a retraction to some extent and shrinkage of government funding in programs, special needs programs and other programs that normally have been funded, and I refer specifically to on the '94-142 Special Education Program, which is underfunded, plus the No Child Left Behind, which makes demands on us, or will in the very near future, in the next couple of years, make demand on us again at the local level. I realize that there's a tremendous sea change at the federal level and at the state level with more responsibility on the states, the new federalism, with more responsibilities at the local level to raise money for some federal programs that were coming from the federal government in the past. So what I'm saying here is that next year, obviously, the board or the people that sit on this board are going to have to make some hard choices, because as parents have special needs children, and those children come, might come into the community, one day might we have to say, or the chairman might have to say, we cannot pay for this program. If you want to take us to court, take us to court, because if the federal and state governments are not working jointly and cooperatively with us, we have no choice, because the taxpayers have picked up more and more of these special programs, paraprofessionals, special needs educators, and so on, to take care of the increasing number of children that are having problems because of the somewhat of the breakdown in our society. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for listening to me waxing.
That's okay. Upstairs, you listened to me for a good 10 minutes, so let's pay back, Charlie. I appreciate that, Charlie. Other comments?
John? Here in the city of Portsmouth, at no time has there ever been a child that we have not fully taken care of, and will always continue to do that. It's what our community stands for, whether you're on the school board, you're a teacher in the schools, a parent, a grandparent, we support our children in our schools. And in doing that, through no fault of, through no direct fault of anyone, because the way the system works and the services that we have provided, and the fact that one child simply moving into this city can have a significant financial impact, our budget process fluctuates upward and downward. And what we have as a school board done with the great assistance of our business administrator, the former superintendent, the new superintendent, the former director of special ed, the present director of special ed, is analyze our programs as my friend Charlie Vaughn has discussed, so that the food service program is in fact self-sustaining. We did make some hard choices with PASS, a program that if it didn't existed, quite frankly, would cost us more, and looking at issues with the special education program, this board member's position is that we have addressed those programs in a way that we've solved the problem and that the pluses and minuses will not fluctuate the way they used to. Very similar to what the city manager did in dealing with issues and the fluctuations of insurance and retirement. We've almost tried to do the same thing with those which the city had no control over. These are programs that we did not have direct control over, but we're addressing in such a way so that those fluctuations will not have the negative impact. Additionally, because of significant financial management, we have also begun to chip away at the negative impact and have a plan to continue to do that. So I was very happy and satisfied with the work session that we had today, and I think that with Charlie continuing to look at these programs along with all of the other school board members, but most importantly, I know our administration will look at these programs very, very closely. We'll be able to continue to provide all of our students, special education or otherwise, with an exemplary education and be able to, with difficulty, but will be able to live within our means. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, I respect highly Attorney Lyons. He's a man of optimism. With my years, however, the glass of water has become less and less. Probably that's a failing of age, but let me say this. More and more, the teachers are being asked in the health benefit programs to give more of their salaries to, for health benefit costs, and we know what's happening to people with pensions in the private sector. We've all read that with great alarm. Fortunately, in New Hampshire, our pension fund, of which I'm a participant, have held firm. There are other things. Gas is going up. I hope my attorney friend isn't assuring me that gas is going to go down. I don't know, but I don't think so. All as I'm saying this, Mr. Chairman, I am a Cassandra somewhat, but I think that those of us who have lived a few years should be realistic at the local level, because after all, we are the little people who pay the taxes, to look at what is going to possibly happen in the out years. And I want to thank again Peter Torry in his own inimitable way for bringing this to our attention. I won't mention any figures. The council knows what it is. Mr. Bohenko knows what it is. It is something that is going to have to be faced. I sincerely hope, being maybe if I was somewhat younger, that this is going to turn out all right, and I sincerely hope so, but it remains to be seen. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to thank my friend Charlie for convincing me that since I'm going to be 50 in two days, I'm still young and optimistic. Thank you, Charlie. I appreciate it.
I'm just going to bring up a couple of things. We had an excellent work session on this and great dialogue. Everybody asked really good questions. I want to let the public know, and through the press or through central office, Peter Torry, along with Dr. Lister, will provide the charts. I believe these charts will make it their ways to both city manager Bohenko and the city council, so they know, along with the narrative that needs to go with this, which brings to light what's going on in the discussion that Mr. Lyons and Mr. Vaughn were just having. As stated upstairs, these are mandates. I will no longer allow myself or anybody say that they're unfunded mandates, because they're mandates. As Mr. Vaughn said, somewhere along the line, we draw the line in the sand and say, we can't do it, and yet we would be breaking federal laws that are mandating that we comply with this. For a number of years, I've talked about it, but I do believe somebody, somewhere, and I'm more than willing to try to help along this, we need to face the reality of what, and again, I agree with Mr. Vaughn that we're the small person, but we have been short-changed by the federal government for 35 years since IDA passed, under the Nixon administration, actually, in '73 and enacted in '75. And I'll say this, I'm not looking for the money that they owe us from 1975 to the year 2005. I'm looking for the funding to begin soon. Election years are coming up. I will not tolerate people saying we should be happy with the 20% that we're getting because we're not getting 20%. When we were getting 20%, we were also, or when we were getting 15%, we were getting more catastrophic aid and we were getting more Medicaid funding. Well, the Medicaid funding and the catastrophic aid has dropped drastically. So we're getting no more money, and in most cases, if you look at it, we're getting less money. This is not singularly the Portsmouth schools' problem. This is a problem across the nation that the federal government somewhere will be challenged to say, it's a mandate. You passed it in 1973 to become in law in '75. Where is your portion? And I believe that that, those days are coming soon. I was told that this is even worse than the cigarette tobacco battle that went on, and I I probably would agree with that, but again, we have passed it, it is for the best interest of our students. There are two further things I would like to say, we, in the Portsmouth school system, are chipping away at it. I believe that we're showing a good faith of eliminating that funding deficit that we have. This did not occur overnight, this is four years basically, three years in the negative, but we have had many years where those were plus programs. In the last six years, and I confirmed this earlier with, in, in the work session, I take issue to the letter to the editor that happened in the paper that stated that nobody has ever turned any money back in. Even in our year that we were zero budgeted funded, this department sent better, better than $80,000 back to City Hall, and in six years, we've sent $260,000 plus back to City Hall when it is. So, I just want to make sure people understand that what they read in that is an incorrect assumption that departments don't hand money back in. This school department has done it in, in the last six years. And, and again, that is one year with a 0% budget, that year, we sent better than $80,000 back. And again, these documents about how we're attacking this process are available. I think Bob did an excellent job explaining this in the work session and I encourage the public or counselors or anybody that has questions towards this to direct them towards both Bob and Peter and, and getting a grasp on this. And again, I don't disagree with what Charlie says. It would take one student that could cost us, and we have a couple of these students, that cost us greater than $100,000 or $200,000 to find placement for. When you have one student that costs you $200,000, that bite that we just took out of that apple this year, and we cannot predict it, we're right back in the same hole and that's all it takes is that one student with those special needs that we have never, as Attorney Lyons said, have ever in this city turned down, and we're doing the right thing, not because we have to, but because we want to for the student. Further discussion on the deficit fee-based programs. Dr. Lister, anything?
I'm also thinking.
Moving on, other continuing business. See no other continuing business? We now have financial, item A, 2005, 2006 budget. This is our first time at this. Peter?
It hardly feels like this is the first time we've looked at our 2005, 2006 budget, having, having gone through any number of budget sessions and so on and so forth. However, I think that what the board is, has, has asked its administration to do is to say now that we have a, a final and true appropriation from the city council at the 5.9% increase, is to, are there any adjustments that we want to make now to that, not to the bottom line because we can't change the bottom line, but to how we arrive at the bottom line, knowing that there were some things that, that might be able to be substituted one for another and, and so on. At our work session this evening, there was a, a memo presented that gave administrations, I would say recommendation, but probably, probably closer to what it is, is thoughts about how this may, may be resolved, and, and I think the board wisely took it under advisement and is not ready tonight, I don't, unless there is a motion that they want to do that, is to, is to ponder this and to, because I think it's, it, it has been a group process all along and, and while administration would, certainly from, from my standpoint, would love to get it resolved and move on, but the truth is, it's not critical that it move on tonight and that, I think the board is asking for a little more time to think on it and will probably take it up again and it's at its August meeting. So, at this point, I, it's just been, it's been motion, it's just been for discussion.
Dr. Lister, did you want, you wanted to put this forth?
Well, I, I, thank you, Peter. What I, what I would like to recommend is because we have some, a couple of the items in this budget, that are listed here as budget items, that we'd like to discuss and provide some information and make recommendations for, to the board. I would like to recommend that we have a, at least an hour work session before the next board meeting and you have an opportunity to look at this in the meantime and then we can discuss each one of these items. At that point, I'd like to make some, have some decisions made about those because they do impact hiring individuals and looking at providing programs, getting programs ready for school to start at the end of August. Specifically, the Portsmouth High School custodian position, a solution to the technology issue that we've had at the elementary level during the last school year, I have some recommendations for that. And then some of the music reorganization issues with the arts. So, among other things, would like to, an opportunity to discuss those with you and have you make some, some decisions about that. So, these are recommendations that Peter and I are bringing to the board regarding the 2005, 2006 budget adjustment.
And just before I recognize Charlie on this, if you have questions on the, if you can get to Bob or Peter defending or maybe the department person, you know, Bob or Peter can lead you towards, because it's an excellently broken down, so you, we can go to those specific groups and, and, and ask those questions prior to the budget session or get your questions so that Bob can have them prepared beforehand. So, when we get to the next meeting, and Patty, our next meeting, is it the night?
It is the night, you were correct, as Johnny Carson used to say.
So, it'll be the night, not like we've discussed upstairs, so it isn't quite as late as we thought it was. So, on the night, on that night, we will have a discussion on this and allow your questions beforehand, so we don't have to go into September, because the next meeting after that is not until after Labor Day. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want the public to know that inherent in both what our superintendent said and, and Peter Torrey was the fact that this is zero sum. And what I mean by that is that the superintendent and Peter Torrey have gone over and removed figures from the budget so that we have taken the same amount out, $259,000, as we have increased it. So, it's basically just moving figures around within the budget so that people will be, the citizens will be relieved to know that this is not any increase, it's merely fish, changing figures around so that we can meet some of the needs that we and the superintendent and others in the school department have felt are absolutely necessary. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Further discussion? See none? Any other financial to be brought at this time? I'm sorry, Anne?
I, I wondered if Dr. Lister was going to give us the technology information at this time, or are we going to wait on that?
For the work session, you want to write it up between now and then?
Later.
You want me to write it up? Because it, you want to give a brief discuss, this time?
Do you want me to just address that one briefly? As you know, we've had some difficulty at the elementary level with technology because we had to eliminate the technology director a couple, last year, and we spent some time with the network administrators, looking at issues that had to be addressed in the technology area at the three elementary schools. Specifically, the area of curriculum and the academic side of, of technology is something we, we needed to look at. We had talked about having some money aside to be able to provide a position for a technology integrator and at a recent, as recent as last week, when I met with the three elementary computer teachers and the three elementary principals, they made a good point that the computer teachers, that we now call computer teachers, were really hired originally as technology integrators. That was their position, they were not hired as computer teachers. Somehow, we changed the focus of that over the past couple of years. So, my, my recommendation for the solution to address the issue of technology integration of curriculum at the elementary level is to not hire a full-time or a part-time technology integrator, but be able to hire at the request of the three elementary schools, have in the classroom where we have technology, a technology integrator, which is the teacher, to have a full-time paraprofessional, as we had before, and to assign one of the techno, technology people to the, each one of the elementary schools. So, there would be three people working as a team collaborating on integrating technology into the curriculum and working with computer, the hardware and the software, and then have someone on a part-time basis be somewhat in charge, maybe for a couple of days a week, and, and work very closely with the network administrator and the technical people to be able to provide integration of the computers into the curriculum and provide more technology for students and provide support for each one of the staffs, provide some ongoing training that we've been remiss at providing this year, to have some technologies, professional development for teachers and work technology that way and be able to interface more with the network administrators. Mr. Hayward and Mr. Teft, the members of the school board, recently went around to all the schools and did kind of what I would call a pretty thorough assessment of what's happening with technology, and they also identified some areas that we thought we might need to look at. But I think we need to look very closely at how we're providing the integration of technology into the curriculum, given the fact that we have over 1,000 computers in the school district. We do have several people who are working on the technical side with the network administrator and be able to beef up our curriculum as, if you will, with the technology and look at this for a year and maybe make some other decisions at the end of that year. But I think we need to begin small and work together, we need to communicate more and we'll really look at providing, integrating technology into the curriculum. So, I'm, I'm suggesting that we possibly look at that as a solution for the coming year and continue to work very closely with the technology committee, which is a district committee, and have them work with us to create a vision, to create a plan and a way of assessing not only the program, but also the needs of students and student progress so that we can provide an exemplary curriculum with technology.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I think that's a real step in the right direction.
And I believe we'll, we'll try to get right up, maybe for each one of these example or these budget items of a small narrative, I don't think we need more than two or three sentences. That one probably needs the biggest explanation.
And having had a meeting with all the right people, I think is most appropriate.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I seem to be rather verbose tonight. I just want to make sure, Bob, in the presentation by the principals of the elementary schools, one of the issues that came up was the not many computers and especially the laptops and that carousel that we had of the laptops, that many of them were either down or broken or inoperative. I mean, that's the, that's the hard, hard news. And that in fact, this particular technician or this person is able to address that issue and fix it, so that if a computer goes down or, and the laptops, that the class will be able to proceed, as I understood it from the presentation, that sometimes classes had to be closed and the teacher had to make adjustments and so on. So, in all your verbiage that, that you said on this issue, is that inherent in, in what you said?
Mr. Vaughn, that's an issue we want to address because there's nothing more frustrating than have a classroom teacher try and work with their students and not be able to access the technology and then be able to, not be able to access the curriculum as well. So, we spend a lot of time trying to fix things and not communicating and we need to work on that, to be honest with you.
Further discussion, again, there'll be a breakdown, we'll have about an hour, an hour and a half pending if there's any personnel matters prior to this work session, similar to what we did tonight. We always could use more time, but we'll try to wrap it up so that we can have our meeting again as close to seven o'clock. That brings us to item 10, next agenda on August 9th, council chambers here. If you have items that you wish placed on or further discussions, please see myself or Dr. Lister. Other, item 11, any other business to be brought forth? You know, we all looked at Nancy, didn't we, John?
This is the first that Nancy hasn't had another.
See no other? Everyone, Clay?
Clay has one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure of attending the 2005 Portsmouth High School senior graduation. I just want to say that it was superbly done. All of those seniors, when, when they received their diploma, you wouldn't believe the size of their smiles. I, I happen to have a, a seat right up in the front row, so I congratulated each one that, that walked by me and I was, I was very happy for those students.
Thank you. Graduation was a delight. It was nice to have an air-conditioned gymnasium. Glad that we can accommodate everybody in our gymnasium. I know we have spillovers and we never want to disappoint families. And again, I, I want to thank each and every one of the board members that was able to attend and again, it's, it's the highlight of what we stand for. It's our last chance to thank these students for being members of our community while being educated. So, again, thank you, Clay, for bringing that up. Dr. Lister?
And along with that, Mr. Chairman, as long as we're congratulating people, could I also mention celebration graduation. This was the 21st year that Portsmouth High School sponsored celebration graduation, and actually, it wasn't sponsored by the high school, it's a non-school activity, but it's because of a lot of dedicated parents who went out and got these unbelievable prizes and gift certificates. Jody Frichette comes to mind right away, who's made a great contribution to the school department, she and her husband Jerry. But with celebration graduation, we had over two-thirds of the senior class who spent the whole night at different venues around the city, the bus company, the police, and just, I'd like to just congratulate the parents because they, they start working on next year, tomorrow. They, they work on this almost a whole year in advance and they've just provided us, high school students, graduates, with an unbelievable experience to keep them safe in an effort to keep them safe all night and so they're not looking for other alternatives. And I'd just like to congratulate them because they, they just put an unbelievable party on for our class of 2005, so thank you.
See no further business? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody opposed to it? Answering the other question.